And then we'll have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. When the colors retire, that is when we'll begin the meeting. And I would like to request that to preserve the solemnity of the colors, we would make sure that our devices are turned off. Thank you. So now we'll have the presentation of colors by the Miami Shores Police Honor Guard.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to all of you. Welcome to the candidates, welcome to the newly elected officials, and a special warm welcome to everyone involved in a campaign that was to be congratulated. Miami Shores, congratulations on an election that shows how many people care to serve and how many care to vote. All six candidates had energetic, polite, courageous campaigns. They gave their time abundantly so that we could continue to have a working village government. Two candidates are here because they tried again, which is very special. Congratulations to all six candidates for this effort and to our new colleagues, from whom even more effort will be required. As I complete my term as mayor, I thank all of you for giving me the honor to be your mayor. Truly, it was a pleasure and a joy. As a mayor in a council manager form of government, however, I have to say that a person knows who to thank. And my thanks go to Tom Benton, Barbara Eastep, Village Attorney Richard Sarafan, and all of the capable and hard-working department heads and staff that will make the support system our new mayor will enjoy. They are wise, experienced, and kind, even when they disagree with you. I really want to tell you how excited I am to work with this new council. This past week, I took a wild adventure in an electric car and arrived from Daytona Beach with eight miles left on it and took a course from the Florida League of Cities, the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. This was the advanced course, by the way, since I'd served two years. The director of the Florida Institute of Government told us about levels of communication and cooperation on a council. The lowest is defensive, and the middle-level councils are respectful and compromising. But the highest level was described as synergistic, people who frequently reach a win-win together. That's the real possibility here, and so exciting. Thank you very much.
This evening, we have a couple of issues that need to be voted upon. We have approval of the April 4, 2017 council meeting minutes. May I have a motion?
Still move.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Not opposed. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. The second item is the resolution declaring the results of the election. Still move?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. You're not opposed?
Thank you. If I'd like to make presentations at this time, thank you. Ms. Ledesma, if you could come up if you'd like to say anything. This is now your office meeting. And your dollar.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I will speak away from the microphone as much as possible. So first of all, I feel like I'm graduating, and I feel like congratulations is invaluable. After four years on the city council, I got a lot in return. I gave a lot, and I feel like I have some leftover scars. But we made it through, we fought hard, we did some really good work. So I'd like to begin this last address to the residents of Miami Shores by thanking my husband, John, and thank you. He definitely deserves a round of applause. Thank you for encouraging me, for supporting me, for knocking on doors for me. You held me through some really rough physical health issues and also through some rough council meetings. You are my biggest cheerleader, and I really want to thank you and honor you. What I also would like to communicate to all of you is how proud and glad I am that I contributed, that I did good for Miami Shores. And I felt like I was of true use while I was up here. I governed and led with several overarching principles. One of those is transparency. One of my first actions as city council was to propose that we streamline and make video access of all of our council meetings. And I found that transparency of government is extremely important, and many people got access to our council meetings through the video online streaming. Another principle that I led by was equality for all, and that prompted me to introduce a resolution for marriage equality. And after a lot of turmoil, I'm really glad that this community stood for marriage equality. And we got that resolution a couple of years ago. I also value our ecology, and that value gave rise to ordinances to revisit our landscaping code and to start the conversation at sea level rise in our community. Government for the people and by the people was the principle that influenced my decision to take on the policy of term limits on our boards. What I had found and people had complained was that a select few of individuals had basically controlled our planning and zoning and code enforcement board for decades. And it was time that we opened up the process. And we did that, and we got term limits on those boards, and I'm really proud of that. The idea of a responsive government led me to bring up the issue of public safety in crime in our community. That was our most recent action that I brought before us. And this was a time when our residents were looking for us at council to respond and to lead, a time that they were scared and concerned about crime. And so we brought it up. That's my daughter crying, so I think she just realized I was up here. We responded, and we took action. So those are some of the highlights, some of the great things that we did. And there were a lot of other things that we did. I didn't want to bring them all up in this four years. But I did want to just highlight a few. I'm grateful that I took the risk and ran for city council four years ago. I'm also very grateful for all of the people who supported me along the way. This was a community effort, not an individual's effort. I would like to thank you for helping me get elected, for coming to council meetings, for offering your support, for making suggestions of how to improve our city. We did a lot together. I really want to highlight a few folks, if you can bear with me. It's a short list. Yes, she's got nuts over here. Bob and Jan, Jesse and David, Beth and Bob, Bob and Danny, Linda and Janet, Liz and Steve, Marjorie and AJ, Dan and Al, Dennis and Clark, Francine and Ronnie, Mary and Doug. You guys, I worked hard for you, and you worked hard for me and for the city. Thank you so much. Keep asking questions, keep scrutinizing our government. Hold your government to the highest standards, keep showing up. The future of our city does not depend on who's up here. It depends on you, the people sitting in the seats. Thank you. Good night.
Councilwoman Holly?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to the many years that I've spent up here and out there. I can call almost all of you by name and many, many more. I think we must remember always that the council, while individuals may be leading the forefront on certain things, it is the council as a whole that is making these decisions, and the council as a whole are the ones that are going out and speaking with each and every one of you. We have always done our best to be accessible. And thanks to 2017 and IT and all those wonderful things that all of us take for granted now, where we did not in the past because we didn't have it, is a wonderful way to keep in touch of what's happening. And I know many, many of you do that on a very regular basis. And for that, let me congratulate you. Because we live in what I consider an absolutely wonderful town. It has been an honor, a privilege, and very humbling to learn as vice mayor and mayor over the past several years that I speak in public in other places for all of you. It's a very humbling thought to think that every time you speak, you are representing over 10,000 people. That's not something that one takes lightly. The oath that these people in front of you are going to take requires them to follow the state law, to follow the law of the land, and to work always on your and my behalf. And I know that I have tried, and everyone I have served with has tried just to do that. We may have disagreed on certain items, and I certainly have lived through enough of those disagreeable things to know that there are two sides to everything. But I also know that when the law is with you, and it's your job to see that the law is passed or law is obeyed, that from the council's point of view, that has to be overriding thought. It's not always easy, and what you might attribute to someone's idea might be true, but it really doesn't matter because each one of us is representing over 10,000 people. Every time we go to a county, we go to a state, or we go to all those wonderful, wonderful meetings that I've had a chance to do, it is, as I say, it was a pleasure, a joy, and very humbling to represent all of you. And with that, I'm now going back to being what I always have been, the residence kind of person. And if I can network to help people get where they hope to get, I do it gladly, and I do it all the time. So please, just because I may not be elected, and I chose not to, thank goodness I did because my right hand broke his ankle in January, and I could not have done it alone. It takes all of us. But understand that everyone who sits here works as a unit, whether we agree or we disagree, we talk about it, and we do our utmost to represent all of you. And so it was with mixed feelings for sure, but with great, all I can say, an honor that you all gave me to allow me to represent you and to represent Miami Shores in so many different places. Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few words now.
Yeah, I'm not gonna stall things. I'll save it for later. But I am grateful to serve with this council. I think we got a lot accomplished. And as I'll say later, I think that the election, more than anything, was a validation of the work that we've been doing for the last two years. Less about me than more about the council working together and building consensus. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve with all of you.
Thank you, Barbara.
I will be brief as well. But I am extremely honored and humbled to be here in front of you all. I have enjoyed serving as your vice mayor for the last two years. It's something that I worked very hard for. And I serve the constituents of Miami Shores Village. I want to thank all those who voted for me and those who still support me. So I've enjoyed being your representative. Yvonne detailed many things that we did. We have many accomplishments over the last couple of years. I think in the years that I have been in Miami Shores and I've lived here for 20 years, I don't think I've seen a council do as much in such a short time as we did. I think there were a lot of questions going into the council after the last election and how we were all going to work together. And I think we worked together very well. So again, I want to thank those who I served with and those who won't be here, especially Herta and Yvonne. I mean, it was an honor to serve with both of you. And you know, sometimes we agreed, sometimes we didn't agree, but we were always respectful of each other and our views, which is, after working in some other cities, something that you don't see all the time. So you know, again, it's just been an honor. I look forward to working with Mr. Brady and Mr. Melz. I see they're very anxious to get up here and get around you. So I will just say again, thank you to all. Very humbled, and I look forward to serving you the next two years. Thank you.
Do you have more comments, sir? No? Okay. I'm gonna call up the new councilman to be sworn in by our village attorney, Mr. Sarafan. So if Mr. Brady and Mr. Melz can come up. And Mr. Glenn, you're already here. Afterwards, I have things for you to sign. But for now, Mr. Sarafan.
Congratulations to you both. If you would each raise your right hand.
All three.
You all solemnly... Oh, wait a second. Let's do this over.
Retire.
I state your name.
I, John.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
and obey the laws of the United States and the State of Florida
And obey the laws of the United States and the State of Florida.
that I will, in all respects
That I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of Miami Shores Village
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of Miami Shores Village.
and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of councilman.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of councilman.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
I would like to make a motion at this time that the election results call for the mayor to be Matt Quinn and the vice mayor to be Sean Brady.
Second to motion.
All in favor? New mayor, would you like to make remarks?
Sure. I'm John Brady. So it's so good to be here tonight in front of you all. As any of you who have been to the council meetings before, I'm not one that typically takes notes, but there are so many people to thank that I needed to put some words to paper. Before we even begin, I must express my deepest regret... or gratitude. To my wife's deepest regret, I decided to run again. But I must express my deepest gratitude to my wife Denise, my daughter Kennedy, and my daughter Harper for supporting me in this endeavor, again, just two short years after we tried and came eight votes short. And lovely, the council saw fit to give me the opportunity to serve, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. But I am so happy that you've allowed me to, you know, realize this dream of public service, and thank you. I would also like to thank the citizens of Miami Shores for this opportunity. I am so sincerely grateful that you trusted me with this. This is a terrific opportunity. I think we're at a really important point in the future of this village. And I'm glad that I will be able to help move the village forward as we have, as I said earlier, for the last two years. I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Holly and Councilwoman Ledesma for their years of service to the village. This is not an easy job, even though it might have the appearance of it. You take tough votes all the time that make some folks mad at you and some folks love you, and then the next time around, the ones that love you are mad at you. It can be a really tough place to be. And they both were true to their convictions and voted the interests of their constituencies and did a great job, I think, building consensus and moving the Shores forward. And I'm grateful for their service. Next, I would also like to thank and welcome Sean Brady and Jonathan Melz. Each of you ran very strong campaigns and raised important issues regarding the village. I am glad, humbled, excited to serve alongside you. I think you both have terrific vision for the village, and I'm excited about the qualities that you've been to the council. Thank you for jumping in, and congratulations on your victories. Finally, I am also grateful to Mayor Murch and Vice Mayor Zelkowitz for their leadership and their continued efforts moving the village forward. I am very glad to be able to continue to serve alongside both of you, and I thank you for your commitment. I think I would be remiss if we didn't thank the other candidates that ran as well. Liangji, Bill, Eddie. They ran noble and strong campaigns, they raised important issues, and it is my sincerest hope that they will continue to stay involved. There are lots of ways to get involved in this village, lots of boards that you can serve on, and I would love to see you play important roles in moving the village forward. I first ran two years ago because I hoped to bring a consensus-building approach to the council. I wanted to try and find ways that old guard and progressive voices could try and find common ground, work together to move the village forward. I feel like the last several years, we have had a lot of success in doing that. As I look back at the long list of accomplishments from the last several years, not to mention the number of unanimous and almost unanimous votes we took during that timeframe, I can't help but feel like we succeeded. We were all able together. Maybe you don't get all of what you want, maybe you don't get all of what you want, but we can all get something that's positive and that makes our village a better place to live. And I think that we did a great job of accomplishing that goal. And in fact, as I said earlier, this election feels like validation of the prior council and the important steps that we took together to move the village forward. As I have said since the first time I ran, I think that this is an incredible place to live. It's not an accident that we moved here, and it's not an accident that we're raising our family here, that we've stayed here. It's not an accident that all of us live here. It is a wonderful place, but there are ways that we can be better. And I think this council and this group of individuals will be focused on identifying and improving those areas where we can be a better place for our citizens and for our businesses. The next several years will require that we act on many critical issues we have already begun. Downtown redevelopment, we have sewers in place. We've passed ordinances that will make it easier for restaurants and retail to be downtown. We have hired terrific consultants, the best in the business, to help advise the village on what to do and how we can best create an environment for the type of businesses that we want downtown. It's time that we make careful and steady decisions on those recommendations and move this village forward. Climate change is something that Councilwoman Ledesma was a leader on, and our council in the last term took steps to try to address those issues. This is our time now to continue to address those issues and come up with a plan for those problems that we are going to face and that our children are going to face in this village. Public safety is something that was already touched on earlier. The last council, as you know, hired two new officers, and we started the process of getting the camera system in place. It's something that I'm proud to have worked on. It's now time to implement that program. It is something that will make our residents safer, will make our businesses more productive, and will protect the visitors... and will protect the visitors to our village as well. Traffic calming and pedestrian safety is a major issue. We invested in that, and we are going to, as a council, make decisions on what we do to keep our residents safe. Revenue generation is another issue. We've heard that we cannot continue to solely pay for the village on the backs of the taxpayers, and there are interesting opportunities in front of us to help fund important infrastructure development and other things that would require additional forms of revenue generation. And finally, infrastructure improvements. You know, the 400-pound gorilla in the room is obviously the community center. And the thing that I heard overwhelmingly from residents is, "We don't like this plan, but we still want a plan." So I think it's incumbent upon us to tackle that issue in an inclusive and transparent way that brings the residents in, and we develop a plan that allows us to create a center that we can all be proud of, that we feel like we can afford it, and that we feel like meets our needs. That being said, I'm sure that there are many other issues that will come to the forefront over the course of the next couple of years. And I promise that I will empower my fellow council members, and our citizens, and other stakeholders to make their voices heard. In closing, again, I am so appreciative of the trust and confidence you've shown in me. You have my word that I will do everything in my power to continue to move the village forward thoughtfully and in as transparent and inclusive a way as possible. I am in your debt, and I will serve you as well and as capably as I possibly can. And as always, if you ever need to find me, my cellphone is online, and my email is online. Give me a call. Thank you so much. Well, thank you. I'm gonna be very brief. I mainly wanted to really thank everybody who voted in the last election. I want to thank everybody who came out to any of the events during the campaign and supported your candidate, spoke out for them, spoke to neighbors about them, and, you know, seeing democracy in action is absolutely a wonderful thing. Seeing a nice, clean transition to the next village council is part of that process. It's really great to see it. Seeing you all coming out here to watch this happen is even better, and I just really hope that you all stay at least disengaged for the next four years, and the next 20 years and beyond. As the mayor Glenn mentioned, we have many, many things that we need to work on, some of them very pressing, some of them that we haven't even heard about yet. So I think the next couple of years are gonna be very exciting. I think they're going to be a real challenge. So as we continue to work together, right, to make the village a better place for all of us. So the last thing I would like to say, I'm just really looking forward to working with this council. Very excited, and, you know, maybe in another, what? You think about 20 years? I was gonna say, about 20 years, we'll be supporting a campaign for Ashland. Thank you very much, thank you. I don't know if I can get my daughters to come up here and do that. They're a little big, and I can never go home if I tried that, but... I want to thank everybody, and congratulations to Mayor Glenn, Vice Mayor Brady, Mr. Zelkowitz, Mayor Murch. I just can't get that out of my mind yet, but I'll do my best. I want to thank you both, and I want to thank the staff and everybody. And first and foremost, I want to thank my family. I want to thank my wife, Evelyn, Madeline, Zoe, Cassid, and my mom, and the people who helped with the campaign and spent countless, countless hours, and Susan Ackley, Jean Corona, and everybody who invited me into your homes and introduced me to your friends. I really appreciate it. It just was really heartwarming to know that people thought that much of me and my family to invite us in and to help us to get to this position. I was a little disappointed. I thought there was gonna be an agenda, and we could vote on stuff tonight and get things done, but I guess we'll all do that in due time. So I'll end and just make one solemn promise to you, that everything that I can do on the council, I'm gonna do for the betterment of this incredible community, and to respect the wishes of the voters who put me here, and just to make this place a better place tomorrow, in 20 years, for when she runs, and forever, just for all of you. Thank you.
There's a reception next door, so please join us there. The meeting is adjourned.